So if Mark, you need to test your sound or.
Bryce.
Bryce is absent. He had a longstanding.
Right, right. Sorry. I forgot about he's out of town.
Right. Dave, can you hear everybody all right?
Yep.
Okay, great. So we'll go ahead and start the meeting of the Douglas County Planning Commission. It's December eighth and we are having our regularly scheduled meeting. I will call the order, the, the meeting to order and for determination of a quorum, I'll call the role. Christie.
Present.
Bryce has informed me that he has a longstanding obligation and he will be unable to participate today. Dave.
Present.
Mark.
Here.
And we've been informed by Brian that he is running a few minutes late and we will be returning to the meeting shortly. So we'll acknowledge him when he is present. Maureen.
Here.
And the chair would make five members at this point, so that constitutes a quorum. If people now join me and I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move to a public comment. Public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Planning Commission. Public comment cards and comments left on the county's website prior to the meeting have been compiled and made a part of the supporting materials that have been provided to the Planning Commission and public for review. Only two periods of public comment will be taken during this meeting. Once at the beginning of the meeting and again at the end of the meeting, public comment will not be taken on each agenda item. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person who has left a voice message on Douglas County's public comment phone line, seven, seven, five, seven, eight, three, six, zero, eight, eight. Once a public comment period has been opened. Once public comment closes, the voice messages will be played to the public and Planning Commission in the order they were recorded. No more than one voice message, public comment per person will be played during each public comment period. Douglas County's public comment phone line became available to take public comment at twelve noon. Public comment will remain open for at least five minutes to allow members of the public to call or until the last caller has finished leaving a voice message on the county's public comment phone line. The Planning Commission wants to encourage the respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If the content of any voicemail is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack or interfering with the rights of others, the voice message will be skipped to the next public comment. So as of one oh three, a public comment is open. And Colleen, if you have public comments, you can begin them now.
Thank you. I do. I have two so far. Here's the first one.
Ellie Waller, W A L L E R. I oppose item number two. It should not be on the agenda until the master plan update has been approved by the Board of County Commissioners. It is not correct to have that put on this agenda. The township of Gardinerville should not have had it December first either. Please consider tabling it until the master plan update is approved.
Here's the second one.
Jim Slade, as to the required findings for Buckeye Farm, A, consistency with the goals and policies of the master plan. LU Policy two point three, Douglas County shall give first priority to infill. This would not be infill, an abundance of which still exists. It would expand the community. The subject area has not even been annexed by Minden. AG Goal two, create alternatives to the urban development of existing agricultural lands in order to preserve these agricultural areas. This request would do just the opposite. MG Goal one, to preserve and enhance the existing character of Minden-Gardinerville community. This development would do the opposite. MG Goal two, to pursue land uses consistent with the plans for prosperity to support the traditional character and quality of life of the towns. The plans for prosperity specifically state that no development in the future urban reserve, which includes the subject parcel, will occur until after eighty-five percent built out of the towns. The building has not approached that level. There are plenty of already approved developments that have yet to be completed. MG Goal eight, to preserve Minnan's traditional scale and rural setting. This proposal would double the population of Minnan and would put substantial urban development on existing ag land, spoiling the rural character of the area east of the existing town. C, proposed development conforms to the adequate public facilities. Water, a will serve letter is completely inadequate. It is based solely on water rights, not recharge. Before long, we'll begin to overdraw our perennial yield. Some wells are already going dry. It would be foolish to just keep building until we seriously start running out of water. In the current master plan update, staff is still using water estimates from 2012. We need an updated water assessment before any further large developments are approved. Transportation, since the county does not have sufficient revenue to build Muller's, a four lane road, absent a build grant, this development would almost certainly make traffic worse, not better, especially through the towns. The thorough traffic analysis needs to be done prior to approval of this development. Muller Parkway will be a substantial and unwanted tax burden on existing residents and should be paid for by developers. Schools, Minnan and Gardinerville Elementary Schools don't have the capacity for the expected number of new children from this project. A new school would have to be built, an enormous cost to county taxpayers and should be paid for by the developer. B, the development will not be detrimental to the county's health, safety, and welfare. This development will be detrimental to the viability of our water resource, the traffic levels, and the overall quality of life, as well as a substantial tax burden to existing residents. In conclusion, this request does not meet the required findings for a specific plan and therefore must be denied. Further studies are needed before a large development such as this can be approved specifically on water, traffic, and schools.
Comment number three.
Yes, this is Jack Jacobs, J A C O B S. I'd like to support agenda item number two on the park holdings proposal. Yes, Planning Commission members, I encourage you to support the specific plan by Park Holdings in front of you today. You may recall, I have been very involved in something related to agri-hoods for several years. I've worked with a group for over three years on this subject to identify how best to handle agri-hoods in our community. And resulting, we prepared a strategy that was approved by the commission earlier in the year. I keep hearing unfortunately that some people in our valley who are, who say this proposal is about development. And I, I wish that that could be changed to, it's really not about development, it's about, which is the wrong focus of it. It's about what I've discussed with you in the past or others in the past regarding community. It's about hundreds of families that come to our farm to buy produce and to share in the conversation about their lives. This is about community and how to strengthen it. Just look at the layouts, written descriptions, imagine you or your families or friends living there. What could be better? You all know I've spent the last three years learning and sharing about agri-hoods, this idea how it could work to improve the values of our community. I will not go through these again tonight. I will remind you that supporting our, the plans of Park Holdings will reward you and the community in the years to come. Thank you. Looks like that's the last one and that came in at one oh four.
Okay, thank you very much, Colleen. I do want to recognize the comments that were submitted in writing and included in supplemental materials. I believe we had nine written submissions. And I can just read those names. They were distributed to the Planning Commission and on the website, Dave and Nancy Hollenbeck, Ed and Cheryl Egert, Walt and Michelle Castaloot, Ellie Waller, Kenneth and Marjorie Smith, Michael Taton, John Embry, Art and Sharon Flores, and Jim Slade. And again, written public comments can be submitted at any time. And as our notice of meeting agenda says, if they are received the day of the meeting, they will be compiled and added as supplemental materials to the county's website and distributed to the Planning Commission with twenty, within twenty-four hours after the meeting. So written comments are additionally available. And again, the planning@DouglasNV.us is the email and that is noted in the meeting agenda. So Colleen, if there's no further public comment, then at one ten, I will close public comment. And the county's public comment phone line will remain open to allow for closing public comment to record, recorded as the meeting progresses. We will now move to approval of the agenda. And we have two items on our agenda. And I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. For several years. I've worked with a group for over three years on this subject to identify how best to handle agri-hoods in our community. And resulting, we prepared a strategy that was approved by the commission earlier in the year. I keep hearing unfortunately that some people in our valley who are, who say this proposal is about development. And I, I wish that that could be changed to, it's really not about development, it's about, which is the wrong focus of it. It's about what I've discussed with you in the past or others in the past regarding community. It's about hundreds of families that come to our farm to buy produce and to share in the conversation about their lives. This is about community and how to strengthen it. Just look at the layouts, written descriptions, and imagine you or your families or friends living there. What could be better? You all know I've spent the last three years learning and sharing about agri-hoods, this idea how it could work to improve the values of our community. I will not go through these again tonight. I will remind you that supporting our, the plans of Park Holdings will reward you and the community in the years to come. Thank you.
Looks like that's the last one and that came in at one oh four.
Okay, thank you very much, Colleen. I do want to recognize the comments that were submitted in writing and included in supplemental materials. I believe we had nine written submissions. And I can just read those names. They were distributed to the Planning Commission and on the website, Dave and Nancy Hollenbeck, Ed and Cheryl Egert, Walt and Michelle Castaloot, Ellie Waller, Kenneth and Marjorie Smith, Michael Taton, John Embry, Art and Sharon Flores, and Jim Slade. And again, written public comments can be submitted at any time. And as our notice of meeting agenda says, if they are received the day of the meeting, they will be compiled and added as supplemental materials to the county's website and distributed to the Planning Commission with twenty, within twenty-four hours after the meeting. So written comments are additionally available. And again, the planning@DouglasNV.us is the email and that is noted in the meeting agenda. So Colleen, if there's no further public comment, then at one ten, I will close public comment. And the county's public comment phone line will remain open to allow for closing public comment to record, recorded as the meeting progresses. We will now move to approval of the agenda. And we have two items on our agenda. And I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. I saw move. Mark moves approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Christie was seconding the, the approval of the agenda. And I would like to note that Brian, I think I saw you on the screen in by acknowledging on this vote, or am I incorrect? Did I not see Brian? Okay. I thought I saw him for a minute. Okay, I'll call the roll then on approval of the agenda. Christie.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Brian. Okay, I had to get Brian still coming in then. Maureen.
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. So on this vote, there's five votes aye and no votes nay. So the agenda is approved. We'll next move to approval of the minutes. And these are the minutes from the special meeting of November fourth, November tenth, the regular meeting, and the special meeting on November seventeenth. Those were distributed in the packets and in supplemental materials. I have had a chance to review those and there were some smaller type of graphical errors that I've sent to Amy. There was also one vote box that was incorrect on the November seventeenth meeting. It did not affect the outcome. The names were just a little bit jumbled. So I've sent the proper information to Amy on, on that particular item. Are there other comments on approval of the minutes?
Yes.
Maureen.
I had some corrections as well from the minutes of November fourth and the meeting after that, that I will drop off at the office tomorrow, for Amy. And if there are no other comments, I will move adoption of the minutes.
Maureen has moved to approval of the three sets of minutes. Is there a second? The chair will second the motion for approval of the minutes. And now I do see Brian that you were back. You missed the approval of the agenda, but we'll, we'll proceed on that and then we'll have you record your presence for the purposes of a quorum when we approve the minutes. So if there's no discussion, I'll call the roll on approval of the minutes. Christie.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Brian.
Brian Owen here. Aye.
Maureen.
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. So the minutes are approved, six to zero. We'll now move to the first agenda item and I'll read this into the record. For possible action, discussion on a request for a special use permit, DP twenty dash zero two seven seven for a mural. The subject property is fourteen ninety-two, highway three ninety-five in the neighborhood commercial zoning district in the Gardinerville Community Plan area. The applicant is Eric Nielsen, manager, Town of Gardinerville. This is APN one three two zero dash three two dash seven oh two dash zero eight. And Eric, you're representing the applicant. And Lucille, you are representing community development. Who's, who's up first, Lucille or Eric?
I will, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Lucille Rayo, community development. Colleen, could you make it available for me to share, please?
Go ahead. Okay. Okay, can we see that? All right. Okay, um, so here we have the vicinity map and the zoning map. The zoning is neighborhood commercial. The location is north of Mill Street and on the westerly side of highway three ninety-five. Staff went out and took a look at the site. I took some photos. This is the Midtown Plaza West Center. This is the front of the building and the photo to the right is the location of the proposed mural highlighted in yellow there. This is what the mural is proposed to look like. Cowboy and his dog. Looks like it might be sunset. And at the top, it's, it's going to say we are open and safe. It's important to note that that is going to stay on there until about March. Matt or Eric can discuss with that further, explain further why that would be going to be removed. But for now, it's, it's part of a grant that was received. And so it's going to say we are open and safe. The dimensions of that I have to the right here. It's nine, nine feet, nine inches wide by sixteen inches high. And then the portion that's going to be removed would be eight by four. The location of the mural, this was given to us by the applicant. So it's actually showing how large it will be on the side of the building here. We have Woodette's diner and it's on the back side there. So the town of Gardinerville, in coordination with Main Street Gardinerville, is bringing this proposal for the mural forward at the Midtown Plaza West. We have Woodette's, the black bear, black bear design there, the Harris lawn, Gedzuk. So it's in that center. This is part of a grant that was received from Travel Nevada. It's part of three grants that were received with COVID nineteen money. Eric and Matt can talk about that a little bit more. If you may recall, the Planning Commission approved a mural some years ago in twenty fifteen. On the it's a Basque mural in town. So this is the second one that Main Street Gardinerville is, has brought forth to us, supported by the town. Mural, the definition of mural is in our appendix A. And a mural has to be approved by the Planning Commission. And that's entitled twenty six, six, zero, oh, five, oh. Special use permit requires, I'm sorry. A mural requires a special use permit in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. Staff believes the findings have been met. Staff believes that the proposed mural will enhance the town and attract visitors to the site. So we are recommending approval of DP twenty oh two seven seven, a special use permit for Eric Nielsen, Town of Gardinerville manager, for Main Street Gardinerville, based on the staff report, required findings, the presentation and public comment. And as a side note, I did not receive any public comment on this item. So with that, we have Eric and Matt in the Zoom meeting. So if you have any questions for them or myself, we're available.
Thank you very much, Lucille. Matt or Eric, would you like to go next and say a few words?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric Nielsen, manager of Town of Gardinerville, and with me, Matt Brubak, manager of Main Street Gardinerville. The two thousand eighteen Town of Gardinerville Plan for Prosperity. One of the goals for this year, for this fiscal year, was to complete a public arts plan for the beautification of downtown Gardinerville. We did complete that plan. It was adopted by the town board in October. This project was one of the items that was identified on that public arts plan. The public arts plan was also approved by the Carson Valley Arts Council and by Main Street Gardinerville. It lists the priority of five projects to get complete, but a total of about twenty projects. And those include murals, statues, and other pieces of public art. We do have a grant to install this mural. It's supported by the property owner. And so by extension, by being in the public arts plan that was adopted, it's supported by the Carson Valley Arts Council, Main Street Gardinerville, and the Town of Gardinerville. We do have with, with the grant, another approved project, which should be a statue in the Endart right of way. And because Endart right of way has no zoning designation, technically I don't have to come to the Planning Commission before that. But I just wanted to let the Planning Commission know that that is the other, the other project that we have a grant for. So unless Matt Brubak from Main Street Gardinerville has anything to add, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Eric. Matt, it's up for you if you'd like to comment.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you very, very much to Eric and Seal and Mr. Booth and this commission. It means a lot to our organization and, and you know, I, I enjoy thoroughly what I get to do in the beautification process and, and working with Eric has been a pleasure. So if there's any, any questions regards to the signage on the mural, as Lucille said, it will be removed in March. That was one of the caveats of the grant is that we have open and safe. And so that will be removed in March. And we did receive another recommendation letter from the owner of LL Realty as well. This came in after the submission. And this was a letter for approvals as well. So if anybody wants to see that, I'd be happy to send it as well.
Thank you very much, Matt. I appreciate the good work of the Main Street Gardinerville Organization. And Eric, thank you for your good work as well. We'll bring it back to the members of the Planning Commission for questions of either Lucille or Eric or Matt. Maureen.
I'm assuming that this will be painted on the building itself. Is that correct?
The previous, the previous mural that we had, the Basque mural, it was actually, it's going to be mounted on a frame so that we can remove it if needed. The owner has given us five years. So just so that we don't lose the rights to the mural. If we need to replace it, we would definitely come back to the Planning Commission for a new location if needed. But it will be on a, on a frame so that we, it won't be, it won't be painted directly on the building.
Okay, thank you. And should something happen, will it be maintained by the Town of Gardinerville?
Main Street Gardinerville has, we will take full responsibility for maintaining the mural. And so that will be a part of the design committee and we'll, we'll make sure that's in our work plan and that we, we, we keep it looking beautiful here moving forward.
Okay. I love you.
Maureen, sorry, Eric Nielsen, I am the applicant. The Town of Gardinerville is the applicant. So if there is an issue with the mural, ultimately Douglas County would have the Town of Gardinerville do what needs to be done to make sure that the mural is in compliance. If something happened to Main Street Gardinerville. That is, that is one of the reasons why I, I was the applicant for the special use permit.
Okay, perfect. And last question is, who is going to be doing the mural? Are they local artists or organizations?
Sure. So because of the, the way the Travel Nevada Grant worked, it was, it was only open for two weeks. And so we went with someone we trusted, the lady Beverly Caputo. She is a local artist from the Reno area and she did our Basque mural. So it was just a great opportunity. She was available. And all these funds have to be expended by December thirtieth and the projects have to be up by December thirtieth. So to have somebody we've used in the past that, that we trust was very, very handy.
Well, I love murals. And we could have them all over town and I'd be happy. So you have my support one hundred percent. Anytime you want to come forward. I'm good. Thank you.
Maureen, I just want, I'm sorry, I just wanted to point out that condition three does state that the applicant must maintain the mural in good condition during the life of the exhibit. So we, we have that base covered there.
Perfect. Thank you, Lucille.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lucille. Any other members of the Planning Commission have questions or comments? Seeing none, the recommended motion is on the screen. It's also on packet page one forty-one. So at this point, I'd be happy to entertain a motion on this issue. Maureen.
I recommend approval of DP twenty dash zero two seven seven, a special use permit for Eric Nielsen, Town of Gardinerville manager, for Main Street Gardinerville, based upon the staff report, required findings, presentation, and public comment.
I think you may have forgotten conditions of approval. Do we need that in there, Sam Taylor, or is that assumed?
The staff report contains the conditions. So it's, it's the staff report.
Thank you very much. Is there a second to Maureen's motion recommending approval?
Second.
Dave seconds the motion. Is there further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Christie.
Hi.
Dave.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Maureen.
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. So on this, there's six votes aye and no votes nay. And the motion is approved. We'll now move on to agenda item number two. And I will read this into the record. This starts on packet page one hundred and fifty-six. This is for possible action, discussion on approval of the Buckeye Farm specific plan, PC Resolution twenty twenty dash oh four, which would allow for two thousand two hundred and eighteen dwelling units, including land planned for single-family, multifamily, mixed-use commercial, neighborhood commercial, agricultural, and open space uses on one thousand forty-four acres of land located within the Minden and Gardinerville Community Plans. The subject property, property is generally located east of Hayburn Road, north and south of Buckeye Road, and north of Toller Lane. The property owner is Park Ranch Holdings LLCs. We have printed in the packet and on the website, the APNs, I won't read each of those. There's approximately, I believe, thirty or more APNs that contain the relevant properties. And Keith Rubin is representing the applicant and Sam Booth is representing community development. I think we have some other people. David Park is on the call. Darren Joffe is, I believe, on the call. And Rob Anderson is on the call. Sarah Shannon, I'm not sure if we have identified your affiliation, but when each of you go ahead and make your presentations, if you would, again, please identify yourself when you're speaking. We may have questions for individual peoples and people, and I'll try and call on them at the appropriate time, but again, it helps our minutes if people will identify themselves when they're speaking. So with that, Sam Booth, would you like to go ahead and start your presentation, and then we'll move to the applicant?
Yes, sir. Good, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. This is Sam Booth, Douglas County Planning Manager for the record. Attempt to share my screen here with you all. Okay, so as the chairman just read, this is, this agenda item number two is for the Buckeye Farm specific plan, which would allow for two thousand two hundred and eighteen dwelling units, including uses planned for single-family, multifamily, mixed-use commercial, neighborhood commercial, agricultural, and open space uses on a thousand and forty-four acres of land adjacent to the towns of Minden and Gardenville. The project site can be seen in this image here, highlighted in red, approximately north and east of the towns of Minden and Gardenville. And you can see that it is both north and south of Buckeye Road. It would be west of the proposed alignment from Mueller Parkway, which would run, run just about along the entire east side of this highlighted map here. The existing master plan designation of the site is receiving area. And the existing zoning of the site is A nineteen agricultural nineteen acre, as well as a small portion which is zoned RA five rural agriculture, five acre minimum. There are various flood zones on the site, X shaded, X shaded, A O one, A O two, as well as A E. So as I just mentioned, the project includes two thousand two hundred and eighteen dwelling units proposed. Approximately forty-four percent of the site is proposed as farmland or open space. And you can see in the sketch drawing that the applicant has included in the plan the layout of the site here on this map. North would be to the left side of your image there, so it is turned on its side. But you can see around the edge of the development are some native pasture and open space uses. I believe that are going to be maintained by the landowner. You can see towards the center of the map here, a mixed-use commercial and kind of artisan pedestrian street, streetscape, and some multifamily designations around that. I think what would be designated is, you know, the downtown for the development. Primarily, you can see the yellow areas here, the residential areas within the development. There are greenways and trails that, that are dispersed throughout the development and kind of connect each of the neighborhoods within the development to the downtown area. And then also out to Mueller Parkway and the existing downtowns of Minden and Gardenville. Mueller Parkway in this image, again, you can see is along the outside of the development, which would be the east side and the north side of the development here. And then there are some areas zoned for, that are designated for village neighborhood commercial uses, potentially a large anchor grocery store or something similar to that. And then areas designated for village centers and a teaching farm. And I'll let the applicant describe those uses further and their, what they deem to, to happen in each of those phases. And let them describe that a bit further. However, I would point your attention to the phasing plan that's within the specific plan. The applicant is calling out that there are proposal of five phases, approximately five phases, and approximately six years per phase to be designated. You can see in the image here, the kind of bluish-green areas along the edge are the native pasture areas that would continue to be farmed or to be open space. You can see phase R one would be the first residential phase to include approximately four hundred and thirty-eight units. And then the kind of that downtown mixed-use commercial center is at the edge of that phase. On the other side of that is phase R two, the second residential phase with approximately five hundred and sixty-five units. And then the development progresses out from there. So to the far left side of the, of the map here, which would be to the north, be phase three and phase four to the southeast and phase five to the southeast from that. You can also see that those village farm center, the teaching farm and the neighborhood commercial areas also called out as well. So a little bit of background about the site. In twenty nineteen, as the Planning Commission well knows, there was a master plan amendment approved for this site to establish new receiving area on the thousand and forty-four acres of land owned by Park Ranch Holdings. That was accompanied nearly at the same time by a development agreement that was approved between Douglas County and the landowner. And that development agreement capped the potential development on the land at twenty-five hundred units. Other provisions that are important, at least as it pertains to this development, are that it included the dedication of right of way from Mueller Parkway. And it included the requirement that Claber Ranch be conserved in a conservation easement. Claber Ranch is approximately a hundred and fifteen acres in size, located along the Carson River. And, and there was language in the development agreement that included that the first TDRs dedicated to the site must come from Claber Ranch. The intention there being that Claber Ranch must be conserved first before any development occurs here on the site. Just want to just touch on what a specific plan is and why the applicant is proposing a specific plan at this time. So Douglas County Code, first and foremost, requires a specific plan for any development in excess of a hundred and sixty acres that's shown on the master plan land use map as receiving area. So in any receiving areas, in order to develop, an applicant or a landowner needs to propose either a plan development or a specific plan. And the code states that if the development's in excess of a hundred and sixty acres, they must propose a specific plan. So that is the case for this development, and that's why they've proposed a specific plan before you today, because the site is within a receiving area. Douglas County Code goes on to state that a specific plan situated in the receiving area may increase the allowed residential densities by acquiring transferred development rights. So as far as those development rights that would be transferred to the site, the applicant is proposing to increase the base density of the property from sixty-three residential units. That base density is calculated at the A nineteen zoning and the RA five zoning. So there's sixty-three residential units as that base density. And when we subtract that from the proposed two thousand, excuse me, I have one hundred and eighteen, it's two thousand two hundred and eighteen units there. So we need to correct that, correct that calculation. However, the applicant is also establishing commercial zoning on the site. And the code states that commercial zoning on the property requires ten development rights per acre. And so they're proposing thirty-eight point three acres of neighborhood commercial, as well as ten acres of mixed-use commercial zoning. So that would require an additional four hundred and eighty-three TDRs. Altogether, the development would require two thousand five hundred and thirty-eight transfer development rights within the proposed specific plan. The findings for approval are located in your packet on pages one sixty-one to one sixty-five. I just wanted to walk you through each of these findings. And staff believes that the findings can be made for each of these, but finding A for the development is that it would be that the proposed location of the development and the proposed conditions under which it would be operated or maintained is consistent with the goals and policies embodied in the adopted master plan. So staff believes this finding can be made. As I just stated, the site was recently designated receiving area in the twenty nineteen master plan map amendments. And as we stated, within a receiving area, a specific plan is required. So that's all in accordance with the master plan. The transfer development rights is described in the master plan as well as in county code. It's proceeding according to those statements in the master plan as well. And we'll use the, the TDR program as intended. And it's consistent with multiple land use goals and agriculture element goals within the master plan. And those are listed in the staff report. Finding B for approval is that the proposed development is in accordance with the purposes and objectives of this title, and in particular, will further the purposes stated for each zoning district. So of course, you're aware that the specific plan being proposed today is not accompanied by any zoning map amendment request to change the zoning of the property. It would require approval of a future zoning amendment. In order to effectuate the plan, each of those areas would, would require their own separate zoning. And the plan is being submitted to show future conceptual development of the receiving area and to propose those densities on the receiving area. So the plan submitted includes proposed development that meets the purposes and densities of the zoning districts once amended with future applications. Finding C that must be met, and staff believes it has been, is that the proposed development conforms to the adequate public facilities of this title, that being Title twenty of Douglas County Code. So the specific plan again is only conceptual in nature and, and just has conceptual development plans. And once again, the plan will require future, future subdivision maps, things like that. And each of those will be assessed on their own as to if they meet the adequate public facilities of Douglas County Code. However, staff has included statements and, and a further description of each of the adequate pub, public facilities that must be made in the staff report. And, and in general, no development shall be approved on the site unless it is designed to meet those standards for water, wastewater, drainage, and transportation. So finding D that must be made in the affirmative is that the development will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to such a development, and will not be detrimental to the properties or improvements in the vicinity or to the general welfare of the county. So there's no evidence at this time. Staff believes that the modification of the specific plan will result in material prejudice or diminution of value of surrounding properties. The Buckeye Farm specific plan is designed as an agri-hood type development that will serve to promote, preserve and incorporate agriculture and farming into the proposed new development in the area. And it's designated expansion area for the towns of Minden and Gardenville. I go on in the staff report to describe further that in general, you know, the receiving area and the development agreement allow twenty-five hundred homes to be built on this site. So at the time those were approved, we didn't know exactly what type of development would be proposed on the land. And it's staff's opinion that this will not be detrimental to properties in the vicinity or the general welfare of the county. And that it's a good design for the land because it is promoting agriculture and farming within a development. As I stated earlier, it is preserving, you know, around forty-four percent of the site to be retained in native pasture and agriculture and ranch lands. There are multiple pedestrian accesses connecting the different subdivisions and phases throughout the development. It includes the extension of Mueller Parkway, which the county believes to be an important regional bypass to the downtowns and, and other items that I've listed in the staff report. So the last finding, finding E that must be made in the affirmative is that the applicant has demonstrated the ability to provide transfer development rights to meet the project phasing. Staff believes this finding has been made. The applicant has addressed the ability to provide TDRs within their specific plan. They indicated that they will be generated for the project by preserving that hundred and fifteen acres on Claber Ranch in the Carson Valley, as well as approximately nine thousand acres of land within Antelope Valley in southern Douglas County. And so in total, two thousand five hundred and thirty-eight TDRs would be required to be recorded prior to recording a final plan for any phase in which they're used. I do have a proposed added condition that was generated after the staff report was, was released that would include the applicant recording a conservation easement over all the natural habitat and native pasture areas, approximately two hundred and eighty-five acres as shown on page eighteen of their specific plan. And also including that transfer of surface water and groundwater irrigation rights from these parcels would be restricted. Would also note that since the generation of the, the staff report on December first, the Town of Gardenville recommended approval of this specific plan with conditions by a four to one vote. And on December second, the Town of Minden recommended approval of this specific plan with conditions by a four oh vote with one abstention. In conclusion, staff believes that the findings may be made in the affirmative for the specific plan request and recommends approval to the quest today. That, that concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, the applicant representatives as well as the property owner are on the line.
Thank you very much, Sam. Mark, did you have a quick question before we move to the applicant?
Yes, I do. I have a disclosure. Mr. Chairman, NRS two eighty-one A point four twenty requires me to disclose a conflict of interest. I've known Mr. Park for many years, and he is also a client of mine. I conclude that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected by this relationship. And because of this is not a clear case of a disqualifying front worth of interest, I am going to be voting on this matter.
Thank you very much, Mark. If there are no further questions or comments, then we'll move to the applicant. Keith, would you like to kick it off for the applicant?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Keith Rubin. Anderson Engineering, representing the applicant, Park Ranch Holdings. I'm going ahead and share my screen. Okay. As Sam pointed out, a specific plan is a planning document required to be filed for any development in excess of a hundred and sixty acres within a receiving area land use shown on the county master plan. We do believe that this is a, a necessary requirement to provide a vision for this property as it grows, as it is, as will be the case over the next thirty-year-plus period. This is infill to both towns. The east of the sites anchored by the industrial park of Bentley's and also by the community college. It has utilities that bifurcate the entire site to serve those areas, plus the town of Minden and Gardenville to the west. So this is an infill area that will occur over time, and so this plan goal is to provide the vision of how that area will develop over decades. It's part of this and part of the development agreements that situated, related to the development of this property. Nine thousand acres approximately of haglands and, and ranch lands will be preserved in South Douglas County, as well as the Claber Ranch, historic Claber Ranch will be preserved as well as, as was mentioned by Sam. And of course, there are requirements in that agreement regarding the, the dedication of Mueller Parkway, which has actually occurred, so the Park Ranch Holdings has beaded that property to Douglas County. So those are a few things. I just wanted to make sure if I don't mention through my presentation I put up front. There's a thousand and forty-four acres of receiving area. The land use is what Len says, there's a zoning between A nineteen and there's about, I think, seventy acres of RA five, but the majority of it is A nineteen. I'm not going to reiterate the first point. We talked about that. Of the thousand and forty-four acres, four hundred and forty-eight acres is dedicated to farming, ranching and pasture areas. Thirty-five acres are dedicated to neighborhood and regional parks. And there's a hundred and six acres dedicated to the village farm, greenways, trails and buffer areas that are located within the, basically the neighborhood portions of the site. Which means when you add those up together, about fifty-six percent of the site is used for farms, trails, parks, public uses and open space. Restoring and strengthening the farming heritage of the local community. This proposal seeks to reinforce local agriculture, support and promote local industry and provide housing for the community. Using this illustrative plan as the framework for the specific plan, the following is an overview, which is envisioned to provide ample recreation opportunities for the greater community and set the bar for appropriate development in the region that conserves working lands, enhances the beauty of the natural environment and accommodated strategic growth. This shows the, some of the open space comments and concepts, excuse me, and the buffer trail areas. I think Sam's presentation also showed that. Each of the community farms that are proposed has its own vision, and the three that we show here, total one hundred and sixty-two point five acres. I'm going to briefly go through those. There's the Gateway Farm. This is located at the entrance of the project off of Zerling Road. And as we said, the Showcase Gardens is where they're planned to go here, that to highlight seasonal produce, sustainable farming techniques, and small-scale organic farming. The next one is the Village Center Farm, which is located on the opposite side of the pedestrian promenade that goes through Phase One, opposite end of the Gateway Farm. So if you can imagine the Gateway Farm and the Village Center Farm will anchor both ends of that promenade. This is the main production farm, which is actually a collection of several smaller-scale artisanal organic farms. And the farm envision here is to feature educational programming centered on sustainable and regenerative farming, small-scale animal husbandry, ecotourism, farm stands, and the like. And then on the opposite side of it is the teaching farm. I also want to mention this teaching farm also has an option to be converted to a government center, and that's in the implementation section of the specific plan, on exercise of the option that was made available to Douglas County. There are neighborhood parks located in every phase of the development that make up approximately twenty-three acres of land. That's not including the regional park located at the Buckeye-Mueller intersection. The sizes of these individual parks vary from one acre to six acres in size. The facilities are envisioned include community swimming pool, splash pads, and supportive facilities, children's play areas, community gardens, off-leash dog parks, skate parks, things that will, when we get to the planned development stage for each phase of this project, we would detail more of how these facilities will be constructed. The Buckeye Preserve is a twelve-acre regional park site, and anchors the trail system that goes through the, through the whole development. The regional park is intended to be a regional destination serving creative Douglas County community with larger event spaces. And this is just more descriptive language of what's kind of envisioned for this site. The pasture and flood areas, two hundred and eighty-five acres of the specific plant site are dedicated to pasture areas and passive stormwater management. These sites sites will receive redirected flood flows. These sites will continue to be actively ransomed by the Park family as pasture area and may provide other agricultural opportunities as well. There are throughout the site, as I alluded to earlier, a series of greenway trails varying between eighty feet to one hundred feet in width, with paved multi-use paths that will serve both internal greenways, which homes front on, in addition to providing connecting trails to the Agmeander Trail System, which is this. And this is a farm-focused trail that enables walkers, runners, cyclists, kids, and strollers to easily connect with the farm amenities and open space destinations by creating the loop trail. Numerous connections can spur off the primary path, making every destination part of the community. The Agmeanders anchored by open spaces, native pasture, the Village Center, and the teaching farms. This area, the trail itself, is a vision to be BG, between ten to twelve feet wide with intermittent sitting at strategic locations. The development area, as I have on the screen, is five separate neighborhoods, each to be entitled as a separate planned development. And each, of course, as all of you know, each of those planned developments can have multiple phases. It's interconnected with the eighty-foot-wide trail system, and as part of this, in total, there's thirty-eight acres of neighborhood commercial, ten acres of mixed-use commercial, sixteen hundred and thirty-two single-family lots that have various sizes between, generally between six to nine thousand square feet in size, three hundred and fifty TND or traditional neighborhood development lots, four to five thousand square feet an area. There's one hundred and thirty-six multifamily units, and in the implementation section, fifty of those required to meet the affordable housing requirements in Douglas County Code. And another hundred mixed-use commercial units were actually multifamily uses within the mixed-use commercial area. Each of the proposed neighborhood commercial notes, again, have their own vision statement focused on neighboring, on the neighboring surfing, neighborhood-serving commercial with a farm-based focus. And this is the one for the neighborhood commercial for the Village Center, grocery store, anchor brewery, beer garden, service stores. The Agro and Ecotourism Center with neighbor commercial, that's Eight Point Lake or some site located just to the east of the teaching farm. And again, this is just possible uses, workshop event spaces, demonstration areas, things of that nature, along with neighborhood-serving commercial uses. And the mixed-use commercial corridor, I'll call it, which is the farm and arts and center you see here, situated between Phase, Phases One. Actually, this is Phase One. This is Phase Two. It's ten acres in size, at ten units per acre. And it's a mix of horizontal, horizontally-oriented commercial and multifamily buildings, and this serves as the core commercial link between the farms. Multifamily residential, most of the two hundred and thirty-six units of multifamily and mixed use are in the initial first two phases with small amounts of multifamily residential in Phases Three and Five. And the residential single-family, we, predominantly the land use with with the most land, sixteen hundred and thirty-two homes. And there are character studies within the plan that emphasize single-family homes with detached garages or homes where the garages are not the dominant feature of the agriculture, of the architecture. There's three hundred and fifty single-family PND homes. These are typically alleys loaded, so the garages are in the rear that are served by an alley. Phasing plan, and as we indicated, this is mostly driven by the existing infrastructure. So Phase One is to the west side of the site. Phase Two goes on the east side of that promenade. Phase Three then comes back on the north side or Buckeye Road. All of these also include the farms, so I want to mention too that the farms are developed on this side with Phase One, the two, the Village Center Farm and the Gateway Farm. And with Phase Three, the teaching farm or the future PF is developed at that time. And it comes back over to Phases Four and Five. Other phasing considerations within the plan require the comprehensive traffic study be conducted with Phase One. That can determine the limit on the number of blocks to be recorded based on the traffic limitations, particularly in consideration of Mueller Parkway. Additionally, Phase One, plan development requires the water system now to be conducted for the town of Minden, who will be the water purveyor. Those are things that we discussed with the town. That concludes my presentation. It was just really a cursory overview. If you have any questions for myself or Darren Joffe, if I please, on the call, his team is one who did the design, the overall site plan layout of the project. And of course, David Park is on the phone and Rob Anderson is available as well. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Keith. Do you want to turn it over to any members of your team or see if anybody else wants to make comments before we move back to the Planning Commission? I'd be happy to entertain those from, from Mr. Park or Mr. Joffe, or if Sarah Shannon is on your team, I'm not sure.
She is. She's with Park Ranch Holdings. I don't think so at this time. Mr. Chairman, we'll just be available to respond to questions that the commission may have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. With that, having said, I'll bring it back to the members of the Planning Commission, and I'll recognize people for as long as they want to ask questions either of the applicant or of staff, and we'll just go around, around the Zoom screen. If you have more questions that that you need to ask after we've taken one turn with everybody, we'll come back to people for a second, second round of questions, and then we'll move to deliberation. So I'd be happy to recognize anybody who wants to raise their hand at this point. Maureen, would you like to go first?
Yes, I, just starting off, this is probably, I don't know, for Keith or for Mr. Joffe. When I looked at Farmer D, the projects that they have designed and helped implement, et cetera, are in areas completely different from High Desert, Nevada. And the photographs that they provide, they all look very well, but I want to know what kind of experience can they provide to this type of development here in a place where they've never done it before? It's, it just, I love the concept, and I think that the potential is there, but I am concerned because our climate is so different and our growing season is so short that this will remain only theoretical, and it won't come to fruition. I need some explanation on that.
So can I, I'm going to start before I involve anybody else. I want to make sure I understand the question. This is Keith Rubin speaking. So your concern, this case is providing the farm areas, I take it, the areas that we had designated for farming, which I believe was a hundred and sixty-five acres. Approximately, again, if county takes the option, about sixty acres or so of that would go to a government center. So it's really, if you exclude that, or if it goes that way, then there'll be approximately a hundred acres or so of what we're going to call farmland, that you're wanting to know what the, how are we going to meet the vision that we discussed in the plan. So with that, I'll, I'll turn that over to both. Maybe Darren, if you're on the call. If not, I'll turn it over to David. Darren, you want to hit that?
Sure, I can, I can respond. I appreciate the question, Maureen. We do work all over the country, so I would say our expertise is in helping to pull together the big-picture vision of how the relationships work between the farm and the community, and not necessarily trying to be the experts of every region, but really leaning on the expertise of local farmers in each area and working out kind of the details of what crops make the most sense based on a number of variables. We did some high-level research on that, and obviously, you know, David's been a fourth-generation farmer in the area, and we've worked with, I spent some time out there meeting with farmers and talking through this. And I think there's lots of opportunities for a diversified farm operation at a community scale. And so I'm not, I'm not personally concerned that we won't be able to produce a wide variety of crops that meet the need of the community. You know, we're not trying to be a commercial enterprise, per se, with the farm. It's more, you know, a community-based farming program. And then part of the vision for this particular project, too, that's pretty exciting and unique, is that this idea of providing land and support infrastructure to small farmers that do have expertise in a variety of different crops can come and participate and be a part of this kind of ag tourism cluster, if you will. And having worked in this field for so long and knowing a lot of the obstacles for small farms is access to land and capital and kind of a market, access to market. And so I think we've got, we've reduced a lot of the barriers through this project for small farmers to be able to be successful growing, you know, specific specialty crops or animals. This land is most conducive. We know that it grows really good alfalfa, and it raises really good beef and, you know, animals. And so there's a significant program here that we envision being an animal husbandry opportunity as kind of a kind of lowest common denominator. But like I said, I do think there's a lot of opportunities for diversified vegetable crops, perennial crops, fruit crops, berries. You know, we've seen some good examples of successful berries being grown in the area. I mean, Jack can speak to that. But to your point, you know, I think the the main focus of this is to make sure that that land is preserved for agriculture, that it meets the goals of the county, that the type of agriculture is more geared towards local food production, and that we would be working with the, you know, universities, extension, local farming community to work out and innovate what potential crops would be most viable in this region. And the last thing I'll say is the beauty is when you have a community-scaled farm, it's supported by the community, and so you take a lot of those market risks out for a farmer trying to be innovative and not being able to take those risks. So I think this farm actually serves as a great kind of incubator and innovator for local agriculture in the region.
When we speak of community, are we talking about the Buckeye area itself, or are we talking about the larger community, Minden Gardnerville?
The larger community. So one of the things that, you know, there's the community college. One of the things that we're really excited about, you know, it's rare that you get an opportunity to have this much agriculture so close to, you know, a town adjacent to a school. You know, part of the vision with incorporating the teaching farm and educational component is that we'll be able to work with the local schools, elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, and college, and, you know, really focus on education and be able to do some of that research and innovation and experimentation as part of those educational experiences for for the broader community. And we absolutely would want to invite the farmers in the community. This is a lot, a lot of agricultural land. A typical agri-hood doesn't need more than about, you know, twenty acres to have a viable working farm. What we, what we love about this project is that it's a substantial amount of conservation for agriculture, which creates an opportunity, you know, for, by reducing a lot of those barriers I mentioned. It creates a great opportunity for farmers in the community that do want to try their hand at something, but without taking all those capital risks. And yet, and also having a, being a destination and having a built-in market with the, with the immediate community of Buckeye, but also the proximity to Minden and Gardnerville and the destination that it will become, I think, will also help bring a lot of other customers.
And how will these people, these farmers, be determined? Are they local people who just want to try their hand at farming, or are they established in the valley and they have the years of experience?
That's a great question. I envision a few different tiers. So one is that we would, you know, I'd say we is the development itself would really invest in the farm first and ensure that there is a talented team to manage the community farming that's going on that will be directly serving the community at large. So this is, that's, I'd say, the focus would be ensuring that there's a talented, and that might be local, that might be people that, this is a great job creator for young farmers or for, even for seasoned farmers to come in and help manage that operation. And then the second tier is that that would help serve to create a, some infrastructure, and we would be attracting and inviting a lot of other local farmers in to participate in, you know, on some of the additional land and be part of kind of an ecosystem there of mutual support. And then the third piece would be, you know, a pipeline of talent that would be cultivated in the community. So the colleges, the high school, people that got interested, maybe got the, got the farming bug working here as an intern or on a field trip, wanted to do a four-H project, you know, maybe they started some, they had an idea to grow something or raise an animal, and they started to pilot something that could turn into a small enterprise or even a career. That would be the goal.
Will there be a fee charged to the people who live in this area covered by the specific plan in order to pay for the maintenance of these areas? We haven't heard anything about that.
Yeah, typically, there's kind of three pillars in these kinds of projects to support the farming. One is, there is an HOA-associated due, just like you would pay for landscaping, that gets allocated for supporting the edible landscaping and agricultural stewardship. So a percentage, not the entire budget of the farm, but a percentage would be based on kind of a per-unit HOA-associated due that would go in to support some of the common spaces, the landscape, community-facing programs, and venues, just like you would parks and landscapes or other amenities. And then there's an earned revenue where people buy produce and pay for events and other products and programs and services that the farm provides as a, as a social enterprise. Most commonly, these are either set up as nonprofits, or they are managed by a farming entity that specializes in community farming as the, as I'm referring to the core farm amenity area, the HOA-associated farming program. The additional land that might be outside of that could be leased. So there's some interesting models where you would have like a very, a reduced lease rate as an incubator in the first three years as you're getting your business established, and then as you become established, you would pay more of a market lease rate for the agricultural land and potentially, you know, rent some of the equipment or some of the walk-in cooler or some of the greenhouse space. So you're not having to capitalize it yourself as a So you're not having to capitalize it yourself as a, as an entrepreneurial farmer in the project. We are getting a share in the infrastructure that's coming only because there's a development there that can afford to put that infrastructure in. So there's a real mutual benefit, um, you know, where the development helps to create the opportunities for local agriculture. And then ultimately the residents that live there become the customers that support it and become a part of it. So I think, uh, did that answer your question? I'm not sure if that covered it fully. Obviously.
Yes, it does, but you mentioned greenhouses and that's the first I've heard or seen of greenhouses being on the property. With our growing season being so short, are we looking at permanent structures that will take up a great deal of the acreage? Or are we talking, uh, something small just for the teaching?
Yeah, usually at this, um, this kind of operation, you would, you would likely have high tunnels, but not, not so much big commercial greenhouses with the kind of, um, infrastructure that commercial greenhouses come with, but high tunnels, hoop houses that just help with you know, very light infrastructure that helps with, um, crop protection, season extension. In a climate like that, those can actually be, uh, hugely valuable. There are, um, NRCS grants to, to reimburse for those. Um, you know, we would obviously place them very tastefully in areas of the farm. Um, and I don't, relatively speaking on acreage-wise, you're talking, you know, minimal percentage, less than one percent probably of the agricultural footprint would be in, uh, in greenhouses, I would think.
Okay, I'll, I'll go quiet now and keep listening. Thank you, Darren.
Yeah, happy to talk more about it offline too.
Thank you, Maureen, and we will come back to people, uh, after everybody's had a turn, uh, to, uh, ask questions. Um, who would like to be next? Mark, please go ahead.
Here, I'll go. So we have about a hundred acres of farmland that's in the village center farm, the egg tourism center, the teaching farm. Who actually owns the underlying ground? Is that owned by a homeowners association? Or is that controlled by the Park family? I just want to know who the ownership would be. And I'll direct this, I guess, to Keith Rubin.
I can speak to, um, a, a few best practices and examples. I don't know, um, you know, if David, if you, or you're Keith, want to speak specifically, but most, mostly what we, um, recommend and what we've seen be most successful in these kinds of projects is that the, 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 that land is designated agriculture, right? So we want an agricultural steward and owner. And so typically what we recommend is that if it's an, uh, that it goes into an agricultural land trust, um, where a nonprofit land trust would hold that land and ensure that the stewardship of it maintains is maintained by kind of the principles and charter of the project. Um, if the, the, there are alternatives, there are other ways to do that where it's, you know, stays an ag but a agricultural, the landowner can hold it, continue to manage it and or lease it as an agricultural operation in alignment with the, the, um, the master plan. The HOA, there are examples where the HOA does own the land and is still under the same prince premise that the, it stays an ag. Um, my experience has been, you know, HOAs are not as committed or reliable, um, to be kind of governing and stewarding agricultural land. Um, so I typically don't necessarily recommend it, though there are some successful examples of that happening.
So, um, my next question is, this is the first agri-hood that Douglas County would ever have. And so I'm being, um, I guess a little bit pessimistic, but if this thing all falls apart, what happens to the land that I guess David's gonna put in a conservation easement? Does that revert to your nonprofit land trust or what happens? Who's gonna make sure that it stays watered and doesn't grow weeds?
So I guess I'll, I'll try to respond to that, Mark. Let me just say that you're not the first Ned Rep who's who's, so I mean, uh, you tell your brother I said that. Um, anyhow, um, it, we're, we're hoping to work out more of those details, honestly, Mark, at the plan development stage. What the mechanisms, exact mechanisms will be. I think, um, one of the things we have in vision to discuss in the plan is that the pasture areas would remain uh, under the ownership and control of, uh, of, um, Park Ranch Holdings. Those are zone day nineteen and just like any other ranch that borders a development, a cluster development, those are usually owned and maintained by the owner. So that is the intent of the pasture areas. The farm areas, we have to honestly discuss further what, what the plan is. Um, they will have to, um, be under also a conservation easement of some type. And how we get there is something we need to work out, I think, uh, with the county. Um, one of the conditions that, um, Sam suggested, um, earlier in the, uh, conversation today was to tie the water rights down to the land. That's typically, um, let me back up. So for plan developments, plan developments are, are regulated by chapter twenty-six, seven, six and Douglas County Code. Twenty-six, seven, six, one hundred discusses open space and how it's, uh, provided, allocated, maintained. But it doesn't really discuss farmlands per se. It's more, I think, geared towards, um, parks and trails and things of that nature. So we, there really isn't a code that addresses this specifically. Um, so again, we're gonna try to, um, address this with some form and I think as Darren was talking about, whether that be a master HOA or a nonprofit or something to manage a portion of these sites. Um, and another one would be to part, honestly, part, Park Ranch Holdings, which wants to maintain ownership, I know of the pasture areas. Another mechanism to, to preserve water rights, of course, is the transfer of development rights system, as you know. So there are, um, in the code bonuses available. If they restrict the water rights to those A nineteen areas, particularly the pasture areas. So we would look to perhaps, uh, those mechanisms that exist in code to affect what staff has, uh, recommended in their condition, which is to restrict those water rights. Cause I think, um, that way we would accomplish, I think, both goals that the county is looking for to make sure that they be maintained in ranching and that the water rights remain with the land. And that where there are no development rights associated with it, that would be accomplished through basically a certification process of the TDRs that are now currently existing on that land since it is zone day nineteen.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Uh, D- David Park, did you have a comment that you wanted to add before we move back to Mark or, uh, you might be muted or we can't quite hear you now. Go ahead to David if you have a, a comment or two. I'm not hearing you, so if you could try and unmute or, uh, see what else we can do with your microphone, maybe? Now you're on mute. Now try it. Hmm, we're not getting a really good sound quality, so if, if you want to maybe communicate some of your thoughts, uh, through Keith, if you can do that by email and we'll, uh, continue on with Mark's questions at this point. Or maybe find a better location where you can get a, uh, get a, a communication through to us. Uh, Mark, if you wanted to go ahead, then, uh, we'll, uh, hold David Park's comments for, uh, for later.
Okay, so I'm a little confused. Is this just a concept or are certain parts of this set in stone with any action that the board takes? Meaning, are we setting in stone that the teaching ranch and all of that, they're going to be there in that specific amount of acreage? And that the, uh, part that's outside of the houses that is the existing ranch land and pasture ground is that, are those acreages set in stone? Or I guess what I'm looking for is what is set in stone versus what are we gonna come back and have planned unit developments on? So is the perimeter set in stone or not?
Who's your question to?
That question to you, to Keith?
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, I say yes, I mean, based on other specific plans. Um, this sets forth the vision of how this property will develop. And, um, and of course, in the plan development, you could in fact request a change, but would also have to be accompanied with an amendment to the master, to the, uh, specific plan. So yes, we, you have to follow the plan.
Okay.
There are minor modifications. Now, let me say that, having said that, there are provisions that allow minor modifications to the plan without having to ask for an amendment, but those are enumerated in the plan implementation. But in general, Mark, yes, you have to, you have to follow the plan.
Okay, I'll, uh, pass it on to somebody else right now and I'll come back later. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mark. Um, Sam Taylor, would you like to interject?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm, uh, Sam Taylor on behalf of Douglas County DA's office. I just wanted to clarify something that Keith just said right there. Even a minor modification is an amendment. Uh, it's just the difference in the, is who has the authority to, uh, finally approve the amendment? For example, major, uh, amendment goes, you know, back to the plant commission and the board, whereas a minor modification can be handled by staff. It's usually just a readjusting, you know, the footprint, but still meets the same basic requirements of the original uh, specific plan that was approved.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, Brian, I saw your hand up. Would you like to go next? Floor is yours.
Yeah, so, um, Sam Booth, you made that correction there that the twenty-two eighteen minus sixty-three was twenty-one fifty-five. When we add the four eighty-three, we get twenty-six thirty-eight. Um, I see that I've mentioned a few times at the twenty-five thirty-eight, so where did the missing hundred go? Um, it's in both their plan and in everything we've written.
Yeah, Brian, this is Sam. I'm just, uh, sharing my screen, uh, back to my presentation. Uh, and maybe we can confirm with Keith here, but Keith and I, uh, had gone over this calculation and I think we both missed that, uh, error in the math. But it should be, uh, two thousand six hundred and thirty-eight transferred development rights that are required. Uh, and I'll just show you where I corrected that in here, that we've got twenty-two hundred and eighteen uh, minus the sixty-three base density units to get us twenty-one fifty-five. Uh, and then we would add four hundred and eighty-three for the commercial areas, uh, to get us to two thousand six hundred and thirty-eight. Um, and so I, that is a correction to the math there and, um, I've included that, uh, we'll add a condition.
I don't think that's correct, Sam. This is Keith. I think the, the twenty-two hundred and eighteen units included the, the hundred units of mixed-use commercial. So basically you're, you're counting the TDRs twice by doing that.
Okay.
Sixty-three off twenty-two eighteen, that's twenty-one fifty-five, so we're saying the hundred.
So because Keith is describing, and I think he's correct there, so there's a hundred units of mixed-use commercial, uh, or, or a hundred units of, of residential units within the mixed-use commercial. But those units don't get counted towards the total because they're already counted in your, uh, requirement for ten uh, TDRs per acre with mixed-use commercial. Is that, is that your assumption there, Keith?
That's correct.
I see Sam Taylor shaking his head there. So, okay, so I confused myself in the presentation and I apologize for that. Uh, but twenty-five thirty-eight is the correct number and that's, that's reflected in the specific goal.
Okay, I, I, I think I understand now, yeah. So I was just missing a hundred there. Now that makes sense because if we're double counting the hundred. So, you know, when I look at this, you know, when we go back and we look at where everything goes, this doesn't address parking now, does it?
No, that would go to, uh, Mr. Well, now it'd go, something we would do at a design review stage or even maybe as part of the plan development, if we were proposing, uh, commercial. Uh, well, commercial requires a design review in and of itself. Usually it was zoning of a large parcel. You don't address necessarily parking, just when the building comes in and the arrangement of spaces and the uses when you would get to the parking analysis stage through a designer view application. Uh, or if there's a plan development involved where you're proposing, there's a plan that only can include all the applications you need. So if a PD came in, we said, oh, we're gonna build, you know, two-story commercial building, thirty thousand square feet. That's gonna have a restaurant and a bar and then you would have to address and show how that was gonna be parked. So at a specific plan level, we're not asking for, for, and of course, it's, and I want to point out, the specific plan level, we're just gonna have to, the future develops, have to address county code with respect to all of those issues. And that's also enumerated in the development agreement. They must do that.
Well, we all know my, I have a major problem with the county code and parking because we never have enough. And when I'm looking at these things, we get multifamily, you know, the TND product right behind it. Um, you know, with really minimal, what looks like on-street parking. So is there really any, I mean, do we look at any of the designs as having on-street parking in here? I mean, it's at current, you know, I mean, because when you look at space, I look at a multifamily residential, say it's a sixteen hundred square foot unit. If we add two parking spaces in a garage, we get about two thousand square feet. You know, when I look at applying that type of math and stuff, I mean, if we've looked within the space, I just don't find enough place for people to park if they have their friends over. That's kind of what I'm saying. Um, you know, I know that'll be addressed later, but we're, you know, when we're, I'm looking at the design, you know, can we incorporate the parking? Was that considered in the amount of space you guys use to draw up your brown versus your beige versus your yellow?
There, if you look in the, uh, plan, you'll see that there are some street sections that are in, um, I think it's a, uh, in a plan view that does show on-street parking for, uh, particularly for, depends on the, on the, um, type of road it is, what the functional classification of the road is, but they have some local street sections, as I recall in the plan that was done by Farmer D's group that show, uh, travel lanes, parking, if you're worried about, if you're concerned about street parking and how that's works, which basically, uh, mirrors county code by and large, how those are designed, what the widths are. Um, and same thing for, you know, I, I don't think I recall the plan, anything down to that level of detail for commercial. But they are, uh, any development would have to follow county code. I know you probably don't agree with it and you'd like to see it changed, but that's what's applicable to the site.
Oh, yeah. So basically in your brown area, you've considered the fact that not just every brown square is just a house. It's got parking with it.
Correct. It'd have to meet all those standards. Whether we can realize anything with those areas is something we get to at the PD's plan development stage.
So let's go back to that TND product. So when you come in from the alleyway, I understand we have garages that would face on, you know, say left side and right side of the alley, um, and they park in the back. Are those roads in front of it technically designed as of now to be one of those on-street parkings? Or is that, um, you know, something that we decide later? I'm, I'm just lost at that, that point. Because those products are the ones that I'm really having trouble finding a place to park. Or the trash truck to get through. I mean, there's, I, I just can't find anything reasonable about the size there.
Yeah, there, I, I don't want to tell you that their plan, um, that concept plan goes to that level of detail of sizing alleyways to accommodate trash trucks. There wasn't, and there usually isn't in a specific plan, that much detail. Uh, that usually comes with the plan development stage where we have to meet all the requirements for alley widths. For example, is, there's a minimum alley width, I believe it's twenty-four, twenty-five feet. Alley's can be as narrow as sixteen and usually as wide, if the, the twenty-four, twenty-five is about the, why does they get before you're really or start talking about a local street. Um, so those alleys are in the county code today are, again, I believe are the twenty-four foot minimum width. Um, and there, when you turn off the alley, then you have to see if there's room to park a car or if the garage is right off the alley. And then you have the street house front sun that is available for parking as well because there's no driveway to it. So that's how you'll see in a lot of these TND developments, um, you'll have a, a pad in the back for a garage you know, or for a driveway, a parking pad, basically. And then there'll be parking in the front. That's typically between the two is how they accommodate parking also within the garage, um, for those units that are TND.
So you say other TND units, where can I find one of these in Douglas County and then anywhere close?
Oh, well, almost all of Old Town Minden is a TND. I mean, all those, uh, old homes that serve downtown Minden are served off alleys and are on five thousand square foot lots by and large. Um, Arbor Gardens in the town of Gardnerville, uh, was a TND, uh, development where they're all alley loaded. Um, so those are just two off the top of my head. Also in Minden, uh, LaCosta and My Vista. Those are the first two phases of it, where basically TND is designed where they're, uh, alley loaded from the rear.
And so you mentioned five thousand square feet, were any of them down to four? I, I just haven't seen many that small.
You know, the, the county changed its code, I want to say over a decade ago, to allow for smaller lot TND designs. But I don't, because, obviously because of the recession, not a lot was going on then. And I don't think a lot has happened since then in regard to new development that utilizes that. The newest ones would have been LaCosta or Arbor Gardens, which were done pre-recession.
So Sam Booth, you can tell us the size of those, I'd imagine?
Yeah, Brian, this is Sam Booth. Thank you. I can, I can tell you and agree with Keith that we do have some single-family residential, traditional neighborhood development zoning in the code. And when we reviewed the plan, I told you earlier that we were able to meet that finding that the plan meet or is in conformance with the development code. And that's because we reviewed the lot sizes proposed against basically the zoning districts that we had. And it does comply with those zoning districts. We have a, I believe we have as small as a three thousand, single-family residential, three thousand, traditional neighborhood development. Four thousand and maybe there's, it goes up from there. But they have not been used in Douglas County as of yet, and I don't believe we have any, any, anywhere in the county to zone any of those uses yet. But they are in the code and so the applicant could make use of those zoning districts. Of course, that would take review and approval by the planning commission at that time when they're proposed. If I can share my screen again here, I did request from Douglas County GIS to, to map the lots in the county that are that size. And so if you can see this image here, and I'm zoomed in a bit, so you can't see the entire thing, let me scroll up for you. But the search they did for me was lots between the size of four thousand and five thousand square feet. And they showed that there's two hundred and nine parcels in the Carson Valley region. And they're highlighted in red. So because of the line work, I'll have to zoom in. But you can see in the North County, looks like along Sun Ridge and then just off the three ninety-five there. As Keith mentioned, it looks like in Montero and LaCosta, let's see. My, my screen's thinking hard here. You can see the red dispersed throughout Minden and Gardinerville primarily. And then it looks like there are a few lots in the ranchos that are also between four thousand and five thousand square feet. But again, none of those are that SFRT is, is how it's described in the code, SFRT zoning. That hasn't been used yet.
So I mean, I'm just getting at, this is something, you know, kind of new, you know, when we're looking at sizing things, you know, and, you know, we're kind of throwing up an air ball here saying, hey, somebody come knock out of the park, something we've never done before. You know, that, I mean, of all things in the plan, you know, I, I like everything about it, you know, I like the farm, encouraging the farm. I was part of the leadership class that put in the farm over at the elementary there in Gardinerville. So I do like to encourage this. It's just this one product within here. You know, I feel like we're throwing up to a developer, hey, make something we've never made before. And that kind of concerns me when we get it down to this size. And, you know, if we do have two hundred and nine lots, obviously somebody's built on that size before. But this is really not up to the vision of the people sitting in front of us. This is up to the vision of that developer when he walks in the room. And he takes four thousand square feet and knocks something else out of the park. And, you know, we're kind of confused as to what we get at that time. You know, I have a feeling with a lot of this that, you know, it's up to the developer when he comes. And, you know, whether or not we have consistency there, I'd still remain to feel that we may not. So, you know, I, these, these lots are the one thing that I had a problem with. And when I'm looking at this and like I go back to my example of two thousand square feet for an MFR. You know, I would think, why not just increase a little bit of MFR, take up less space and let's even make the single-family bigger? I mean, you know, I've always had a problem with these small lots and this entire development's the small lots that below, almost below that eight thousand square foot mark that, you know, we see. And so, you know, I do appreciate that you guys are doing something great, new and, you know, design-wise it looks great. But, you know, this little beige area that runs through this entire thing is the one thing that I had the most trouble with. I can't find parking. I can't find really a lot of things to, good to say about it, other than it creates a smaller lot. And it's, like I've said in the past, the lot size doesn't matter. It's the home size that'll determine the price. You take five thousand square feet, go down to four and it took ten thousand dollars off your price, you know, it's not something crazy. So, you know, when I'm looking at this, it's just, you know, single-family residential is the way I look at it, really on a small, tight space. And we're slamming a whole bunch of people into Minden and even tighter than in the ranches, as you just mentioned. There's not too many of those lots here and we'll have a ton of them here. So we're really cramming it in here and I, I'd almost prefer, and I hate to say it, more multifamily than, you know, what we see here in this product. And, you know, I do understand that you guys are kind of set in this plan and, you know, it's up to the developer. But let's make sure these developers can't screw us when they come back, guys, because I feel like this is our opportunity. And we're really throwing up, you know, almost an air ball here, I think. And who knows if they're going to grab it and stick it in? So I, I don't know. This is the one thing I have the most trouble with here. So maybe Keith Rubin or somebody can make me feel better about it.
Well, I'm not sure if I can make you feel better about it, Mr. Olin, but I'll just tell you that I don't know if I would agree with the characterization of an air ball. They have to follow the Douglas County Code and they have to follow the zoning district standards, which were, at the time when they developed those was, if you go back and listen to the minutes, look at the record, was extensive by the planning commission and the board, by the planner who ran those truth at the time. I even remember his name, but I won't, doesn't matter who it was. But they, it was a big point of contention and discussion about, is this a good idea or not? But they did ultimately approve it. And so this would, and I think the standpoint of this would be, if it develops, this would be one of the first projects. I don't, and just to tell you, I don't know if, if Park Ranch Holdings is all that married to the concept of the TND lot. When I looked at it, honestly, I thought that those could just as easily accommodate multifamily townhouses as opposed to individual lots. So, you know, that's something we could maybe had as an option in the, in the language of the specific plan to convert those TNDs into some form of a townhome, attached townhomes, similar to Montero, where we're in phase three that just are developing currently. Some mix, perhaps we would take half of those units in that format, convert them to townhomes and the other half that are TNDs, we would make a typical single-family lot out of, let's say. So there, there is, you know, as we discussed earlier, the specific, specific plan has a vision and we have to follow it. If you want to give some leeway in the plan, I think, you know, personally, I think there's room to do that, at least with this one item. But you have to be explicit in the implementation language, what it is, that option is. Or if we come forward and we say, boy, these TNDs don't work, we'd have to probably file a specific plan amendment to change those. And the more regulatory hurdles that are created, the less likely developers are going to want to do it. They're just going to want to follow the plan. And they'll have to get into those arguments later with, with that future planning commission.
Well, and Keith, the great thing is, you actually said the product that would put my mind a little more at ease. Because it's that product we see also up at Topsie is that Montero product where, you know, that's really a product I see elsewhere where it does create almost a single family, but it really is a multifamily unit. You know, you get four owners with garages, single ownership and, you know, you can put a bunch of those. And I do like, you know, the amenability to possibly making it not necessarily TND, but possibly allowing for that type, you know, to be there as well. Because does the four thousand square foot, Sam, allow them to just change to that? Or do we have to, I mean, as Keith mentions, do we need to include that as some sort of specific language to your specific land to allow that, other than the TND, the way you guys state it now?
Thanks, Brian. This is Sam Booth. I think if the planning commission agrees with what Keith just proposed there, and, and maybe what's being discussed, which is that the single-family TND, that three hundred and fifty lots that's highlighted in the plan, the option for that to be attached townhome style units. The difference is that would require two different zoning districts. So right now, in order to get attached units approved, you have to develop those in MFR, multifamily residential zoning. But the single-family TND has its own zoning district, single-family traditional zoning. So I think that could be done in the specific plan. Either we just add another condition, which would say that the single-family TND can be developed either as a single-family TND lots or as attached multifamily units. And I, and I see Sam Taylor shaking his head, so I'm saying something right there. So hopefully we can, we can just include a condition like that that would cover either or scenario. And when the applicant would come forward to present that plan development or that subdivision for that phase, we would look back at the condition that we placed on the specific plan.
And I think that'd be great because we don't determine zoning today, as you guys mentioned earlier. So, you know, if they choose this one over that one, then they go forward with the zoning. I think that would work. And again, it's a product they've done before and I like the product they've done before versus one they have not.
Thank you, Brian. Very good points and thank you, Sam Booth. And perhaps I saw Maureen's hand up. Perhaps we'll go to some of the other members now. And while we're discussing further elements of this, maybe Sam Booth, you can gin up some language that we can then have for discussion at, at the appropriate point. But Maureen, your hand was up. And then Christie or David Cola will go to you. I can't see whether your hand's up or you need to speak. But Maureen, please go ahead and then I'll recognize Christie or Dave.
One of the concerns I have, and someone can address it, is when Sam Booth was making his presentation under C, we were talking about the specific plan being conceptual. And then I'm looking through the R.O. Anderson Letter of Justification and they talk about the development plan, the development plan, the development plan. And my concern is that, similar to what Mark said, I don't understand what's cast in stone, what flexibility the planning commission has with regards to this specific plan. Is it truly conceptual? And then what Mike Kennison said from Gardinerville, we don't know what the ultimate product is going to be when it comes to us, because all these are going to be under different developers. So if we can go through it a little bit and tell us, what are we dealing with? Is it just a vision because that's been used to describe this? Or are we, as Mark is saying, accepting something that can't be changed, can only slightly be altered when the development plan comes through?
Thank you, Maureen. Keith Rubin or Sam Booth, do you want to take a crack at giving Maureen a, a better answer or more explanation on this one?
I'll be, well, I'll tell you, but I'll, but I'd like to just ski through, but I'd like to point to a couple of general provisions in the specific plan. So general provision number, let's see, four. If a situation arises which is not sufficiently addressed in the specific plan or is not clearly understandable, then the community development director shall render a determination on the appropriate regulation, being consistent with the intent of the specific plan and Douglas County Code, this decision may be appealed to the Board of Commissioners. That's one. Number five, the development must comply with all applicable subdivision and construction requirements and effective time of the development. Except as modified herein. This gets to the design standards, more detailed design standards for the overall project will be developed and submitted for approval as part of the first plan development application. These design guidelines will establish more detailed requirements for community-wide elements such as street sections, streetscape treatments, entry gateways, building and development standards, architectural character, signage and lighting. This was really prompted by the town of Minden, who asked that we develop a design manual with phase one that would basically apply throughout the project. So they know down to, again, what type of street light is going to go in. We don't have it at this stage. That's not the detail we have. This, when we say that's conceptual, we're talking about acreage involved, open space involved, number of units involved, type of units involved. But we're not down to the, where you would get to exact footages of how wide the street is, what type of curbing gutters going in, how much parking was provided with this commercial area, things of that nature. No, they're not, they're not addressed in a specific plan. It's just enough to set the vision. You know, if you think of your general plan, the county's or county's master plan has now, you're, you're at a eighty thousand feet. This plan takes you down to thirty and then the next level of documentation, the specific, or the plan development takes you down to five thousand and then ultimately approval plans, which is how tells the contractor how to build your streets or sewers or water, your, your houses. That's, you know, then you're blending your plane. So we're just, we're coming down, showing how, focusing the vision as we go along. I ask how I've always looked at these specific plans. I don't know if I've answered your question. I'll let Sam supplement it, but.
Aren't we saying that the way that these neighborhoods are set up is how they are going to remain?
Yes, without, without amendment to the plan, this is how they'll remain in terms of its relation to the open space, its relation to the farm areas, its relation internally, the lot sizes. Yes, that, this is how it's planned. This is the vision and we have to comply with it per the text of the plan.
Okay. No offense, Brian, but I walked through the Montero townhomes today because they're close to me. They are a nightmare. There's no parking. People don't have any place to hang. There's a large streetscape across in the elementary school, but the rest of it, there's no space. And I would much prefer the TNDs over the townhomes. It's just, take a drive through there. It's educational. But thank you for the suggestion.
Thank you, Maureen. Christie or David Cola, would you go, like to go next with questions of either the staff or the applicant?
I think all my questions were answered throughout the presentation and the other follow-up questions.
Okay, thank you, Christie. David Cola, you have any questions that you'd like to ask of staff or the applicant?
No, I don't have any questions. I have some comments.
Go ahead.
We talked about the master plan and we talked about development within the valley. And I have to bring up my same thing. We don't have enough water to support all these houses. Until the study is done by a hydrogeologist, I couldn't support any approving anything in the valley. I think that within a few years, there's going to be a moratorium on building permits in the county. Because we have run out of water and nobody has addressed that and it doesn't look like anybody's going to do it unless the next BLCC does.
Thank you, Dave. Anything else you wanted to add or we'll come back to you a little bit later on if you, if there's nothing else at this point?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a couple of kind of bigger picture items that I'd like to run through with staff or the applicant. And if you've got some short answers or some comments on, on some of the things that I want to put on the record, please feel free, just jump in, raise your hand. First of all, I just wanted to note, I don't think it was in very, the, very much in the packet material that the, the Economic Vitality Manager, Lisa Granahan, has been working on the agrihoods for quite a while. I don't know if, if Darren Jaffe, you've been involved in any of that or Keith, or I know probably David Park has. But most recently, they did approve, accepting the Douglas County Agrihood Strategy on September third, twenty twenty. And there was a pretty good presentation in that, that meeting that walked through a lot of the information on agrihoods. So I think that's some, some things that are fairly important that we note. Keith, maybe if I could ask you, obviously this agrihood is a new concept and it's, it's exciting to a lot of people. You had other alternatives, though, with the development agreement didn't lock you into agrihoods. You could have come back to us with something similar to Ashland Park or the Big George Projects. Is there a reason why you didn't bring a more traditional proposal to us? And you're bringing this one forward?
Well, I'm going to give credit to the owner, property of coming up with the specific plan and working with Darren and his group. I think it's a testament to Park, the Park Ranch Holdings, wanting to master plan this area to give the, the community the vision that will occur here over the next, again, thirty-plus years, in my opinion. It's going to go beyond likely thirty years. You may, you may have all the PDs set in place in thirty years, but I still, at least based on the current growth rates, it's mighty hard to believe that every unit will be developed in here. I think it will go beyond my lifetime. And so I, I do think it's, it's testament to him. He, he could have came in with a series of small plan development tentative maps and foregone a specific plan altogether. Uh, a series of small plan development tentative maps and foregone a specific plan altogether, in, in my opinion. Um, the code says he has to do it for development over a hundred and sixty acres, but there's nothing that says he couldn't. Propose something smaller than that through the traditional PD and piecemeal the site. So I think it's great that he did this. I, I. Uh, and I commend him for it. I think even though plans change, we've seen and I'll be the first to admit. Specific plans have been modified through the years. Um, the, the Douglas County plan that they did in North Douglas County has been modified. Um, the Nevada Northwest Plan has been modified. Um, Oakwood specifically, I said that one pretty much went. According to Hoyle, it did, didn't change much. It was a small site to begin with, but it, it went pretty much as originally planned. Um, the, the Nevada Northwest site, most of the changes that I was involved with in that were driven by um, really. Things that no one in two thousand and one, when that plan was adopted could envision, like, oh, I don't know, Amazon. As we discussed and went to this uh, planning before, through those modifications that really changed the face of how much retail commercial. You need in the community and where it's located. It's just, it's just totally changed the whole landscape across the country. Um, didn't have any idea when the planner or the uh, the owner at that time wanted five hundred thousand square feet of retail. That there, that Amazon would come along and change all that demand. So yeah, there. Specific plans can be modified and amended, but it does start with the vision. It does, it will lay out. Um, the concept which I, I don't believe uh, will change, particularly with the free, the phase one, which really sets. The boundaries of the whole plan. It establishes the um, the farm areas and the pasture areas. Um, eighty percent of it, the phase one, and that's not really, in my mind, locks in those development areas that. You're, that they're going to, we're going to have to live with this once it's done.
Thank you. And that lays me right into my next question because I did want to a- address the freight, the phasing. And talk a little bit about that. And this is on packet page uh, two hundred and forty-six. I don't know Sam Booth, if you want to share your screen. Uh, or if members want to refer to it, but we do talk about the phasing and, and basically what you're doing, going to do is start to. On the uh, the land off of uh, Hayborn and Zero Lane, which would be the Gateway Farm. And then you're going to move forward on a road that would go to the Village Center Farm and that would be also be in phase one. But then the housing would be uh, in uh, in phase one, the R one, and those would be four hundred and thirty-eight units approximately, I think. Uh, Keith.
That's correct. So phase one would, as you've laid out, would be the first PD and with that phase one, it would include the. Phase F one Gateway Farm and the phase F one Village Center Farm. And then the native pasture areas that, that um, basically include. Um, adjacent to the, the future Moore Parkway and adjacent to the town of Gardinerville. So all of that comes in with phase one. In addition, the right of ways are secured for, let's say, Hayborn Road going through. Uh, the native pasture areas, as called in this plan, adjacent to town of Gardinerville. So those right of ways. And the extensions that connect the Gardinerville are preserved with phase one to ensure that. If you have ultimately, as we've seen other products, multiple property owners that someone can't hold. Other parts of their project hostage by not wanting to grant the right of ways. So those come up front.
Thank you. And then you, you mentioned that the phases uh, go in approximately six-year intervals. Is that, that's what the plan is? So when I. Do the math, we've got four hundred and thirty-eight uh, units in phase one. If you, if you keep it the density that it's planned now. Um, but that brings you down to about seventy-three units uh, a year. Is that uh, am I coming up with the math right?
That's, that I think is the, the estimate based on um, the absorption. Uh, within that plan area. Yes, if you take the, all the units and spread it out over thirty years. It would average about seventy-three units a year.
Okay. And then I know you, you had a discussion on the growth management ordinance and the buil- building allocation uh, plan. Uh, but you feel pretty comfortable that you're going to be able to fall within uh, those uh, those restrictions. Uh, based on your phasing, uh, is that, is that correct assumption?
You know, I, I do believe we can fall within that uh, as it's currently constituted. Yes, we can.
Okay, so, so we're not.
But of course, you know, having said that, this project has to compete for, with other projects in this um, project pool. For this type of development. So, you know, it could, it could, in the way that the growth management structure. There's more, there's fewer units available in the first few years of the project than there are in the latter years because. Some of those project pool units, uh, basically, uh, the, the vested units um, are, are then utilized. And it increases. So the later years will be more units available. It appears the way that the. Um, building allocation forms the structure than in the beginning years.
Right. And, and you make a very good point. You're not only competing in the pool for the allocations, but you're going to be completing, competing in the marketplace too. So when we bring it back to the big picture, if people don't like agrihoods, if people don't like small lots, if people don't like the product that you're putting on those lots. Uh, you're competing in the marketplace and there's no, no guarantee you're going to be successful. Um, you're, the, the, the app, the applicant bears all the risk. This is not a risk that's placed on the county. Uh, the county's giving you the opportunity and uh, you've got to make uh, make the product work.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, uh, Sam, Sam Booth, if I could maybe come back to you again on the, on the larger picture. Uh, because we've skirted this issue a little bit, but I, I think Maureen made some good points. Mark made some good points. Brian made some good points. But we're at the specific plan level and I, I think Keith, you addressed this as well, but I'd like Sam to weigh in as well. On, on the staff, staff level. Uh, basically, we're going to have a lot of other portions. Of this that we're going to deal with in sequence. Uh, we got a, a possible plan development. We have the zoning maps, we have the subdivision maps, we have the design, design review applications. So those will all come. Uh, whether they come in the next six months or a year, whether they come in two years or three years, but based on your experience. How many other times are we going to have these people before us dealing with more specifics on this as we drill it down to the actual building level?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Sam Booth. Um, I can't speak to the, you know, the, the number of times that they may be before us, other, other than to say it's going to be multiple times. Um, you know, uh, in, in Keith, feel free to jump in. Um, if, if there's anything further you'd like to add. Uh, but at the town of Minden, um, uh, Keith and the property owners discussed. Um, the town of Minden's desire to create and develop um, design standards that the site would be subject to. Uh, and they included uh, language to that within the specific plan. Basically, the town of Minden has been working to develop design standards. They were concerned that if the plan, this plan is approved before their design standards are, that it wouldn't be subject to it. Uh, and the applicant and property owner agreed to work with the town of Minden to develop design standards. Um, uh, that would apply to the site. And so that's, I, I would guess, one of the first things that they would be doing is having those discussions. Uh, with the town in working through um, the particulars of those. Uh, then we've also talked about uh, some conservation easements potentially. Uh, the uh, the right of way for these roads, it's going to have to be surveyed. Um, you know, many times. Uh, parcel maps are submitted uh, early on to uh, separate these phases out into different APNs. Uh, and establish the right of ways uh, that Keith has discussed are going to be dedicated in some instances upfront. Uh, again, those deed restrictions and easements. So they're going to be doing the work on those type of things. Uh, then let's, let's say they move beyond that. Uh, they're also going to have to do some updated traffic studies and the county's going to be working to update the. Uh, county's transportation plan uh, to further define uh, these areas. Uh, and their wastewater uh, in, in water studies uh, and analysis that are going to be uh, required to be submitted with their subdivision and plan developments. Uh, so you get all that type of background work that I'm sure they're going to be working hard on uh, in the next few months or years. Uh, then, then they may get to the point that they can submit a plan development and subdivision map for phase one. Um, and so uh, you know, that's going to come to the planning commission for approval. Uh, it would need to be uh, included with its associated. Zoning map amendment because remember this entire site is zoned A nineteen. So they're going to have to request zoning amendments. Uh, and the plan development, then the subdivision map. If that's approved, that's just for one phase. And we've talked about there's six phases here. So they're going to be back for each one of those. Uh, subsequent phases for approval and, and to establish the zoning on those as well.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, that's, that's a lot on our plate and a lot on uh, on Keith's plate as well. So, thank you very much. Um, Keith, did you have anything else to add? If not, I'll go back to Mark or Brian or Maureen or anybody else on the planning commission for. Additional questions at this point.
I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you, Keith. Uh, Maureen, did you have a question or comment that you wanted to throw out now?
Uh, yes, I do. I'm. We are on the cusp of getting our new master plan. Since this won't be coming to the planning commission again. Until twenty twenty-one, will those standards in the twenty twenty master plan apply to this project at all? Or the changes that we're going to be making, the updates to the zoning code for twenty twenty-one? Will this project be subjected to those or are we, are the standards from twenty, two thousand and eleven. Applying to this project and the old development code applying to this project?
Oh, Maureen, this is Sam Booth. I can try to uh, speak to that. Um, I think as, as far as the development code, certainly today's. Uh, development code is, is what will apply to the development. Um, and there is language in the back of the plan that the applicant has placed them there. Um, I think it's even redundant uh, that they, essentially they have a development agreement. Uh, that froze the development code in place at the time of approval for the development agreement. Uh, so twenty nineteen. Um, and that's why there was a concern by the town of Minden for their design standards and the applicant agreed. Uh, to work with them to develop those design standards further. Uh, as far as the master plan. Uh, of course, what I have in, in the staff report today analyzed the existing ineffective twenty eleven master plan and those. Goals and policies that apply to the property. Um, the timeline that I, that, that I would foresee here though. Uh, and, and crossing my fingers, uh, is that uh, tomorrow, Thursday and Friday of this week. Uh, we're presenting to the Douglas County Commissioners, uh, the master plan, uh, that the planning commission approved. So we're hopeful that the plant, uh, that the board of commissioners would approve the master plan update this week. Uh, which would mean that uh, when the ma- uh, when the specific plan comes back to the county commissioners. We do have a new and approved uh, updated uh, county master plan. Um, and, and you know. This, I think, just highlights the, the idea and, and the reason that staff is, um, you know, uh, hopeful that we can get an update to the master plan approved. Uh, because again, we are working under the twenty eleven master plan and we're, you know, nine years behind the times with the data and statistics and the goals and policies and that. But uh, hopeful that the master plan update's approved this week. I can't guarantee that, uh, but if it is. Uh, the plan would be subject to that when it's uh, you know, brought back to the county commissioners for approval.
I'm asking about the development code because I agree with Brian wholeheartedly. The parking standard is woefully inadequate. And I. I am very disappointed that this, this whole specific plan in this project is. Tied to the old development code when we, there are so many changes we want to make to update it. And I certainly hope that the applicant and his representatives are listening. And that the planning commission has said many times that parking is inadequate. And we need to make these spaces livable, not just working out financially.
Thank you, Maureen. Anybody else on the planning commission want to uh, add further questions or comments? Mark.
You know, David's been a lifelong resident of Carson Valley. He's a very intelligent person. And I truly believe that he does care about the valley. I like the fact that he's bold enough to take on something like an agrihood. I trust that through his advisors, he's left himself enough flexibility. So he can make changes in each phase should market conditions change. Cause we all want this plan to be successful. I really don't have any other questions. I believe that this is a concept.
Thank you, Mark. Very good points. Um, anybody else uh, want to chime in right now? Um, if not, I think we're at the point, um, Sam Booth, you had the devised. An additional recommended conditions. I would call the attention of the members of the planning commission to packet page one sixty-six. Which are the six recommended conditions that were detailed uh, previously. And I believe uh, Sam has added an additional condition, uh, which he discussed briefly in his presentation. Uh, now might be the time if people want to entertain questions of Sam or of the applicant with uh, this specific. Uh, additional condition, or if uh, Sam Taylor has comments or questions. And then we can uh, move on to uh, further deliberations on the, on the issue before us. Uh, Sam Booth, did you want to uh, toss something out?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Sam. Uh, just wanted to explain, uh, I have just placed a few of these on some slides for. Uh, just for discussion by the group. Uh, so the, the first one, number seven, I had showed you previously. Um, uh, in my presentation, um, about prior to recording the first subdivision map. The applicant would record a conservation easement for all uh, natural habitat in native pasture areas. That's approximately two hundred and eighty-five acres. Uh, shown in the specific plan and the transfer of all uh, surface and groundwater rights from these parcels would be restricted. Um, one other thing for consideration, I think we heard earlier in the presentation was. Uh, whether or not the village center farm uh, would also be added uh, to this condition. Um, and, and would throw that out there for your discussion. Uh, another proposed condition I have. Um, and I want to clarify this as a condition since uh, we went back and forth on the TDR uh, number there is that we have. Uh, we, I think it's a good idea to include it as a condition, um, although it is in the specific plan itself. Uh, that the plan is subject to two, two thousand five hundred and thirty-eight uh, transfer development rights. Uh, and I'd like to show my math there so that nobody's confused in the future when they're interpreting this. That we're subtracting out those one hundred mixed-use commercial units as we discussed, subtracting out the sixty-three uh, base uh, density units. And then we're adding the four hundred and eighty-three units for commercial and mixed-use acreage to get us to twenty-five thirty-eight. Uh, so a condition for that. Uh, the final one that I heard discussion on, um, and I'm not sure where we, where we fell on that, but. Uh, the way I've, I've just written this up is that single-family T and D lots, uh, three hundred and fifty total. Shown on page thirty-three of the specific plan may be developed as either single-family T and D, four thousand to five thousand square foot lots. Or as MFR attached townhome style units. That would give the applicant the ability to propose that. With a plan development or subdivision and then the planning commission, the ability, uh, you know, obviously to approve or deny that when that application comes forward.
Thank you, Sam. That's very helpful for uh, for our discussion. Sam Taylor, uh, like to comment, please.
Yes, Sam Taylor, uh, Douglas County DA's for the record. A couple of quick points. One is Sam on this item number nine that's. Before us right now, I would say three hundred and fifty and put units. Um, just a little change there. If you can go back to the, the one about the conservation. Um. Yeah, we need to add the, the farms in the middle in terms of reservation of the water rights. I mean, you can't have those farms operate without the water rights being included. So, you know. However, that's going to be structured in terms of ownership and operation. At the very least, they have to have water rights to operate correctly as a farm. So. Um, however you want to wordsmith that, I think that's important to include. And then also, uh, whenever we're getting ready to do the motion, we just need to make sure that these are included in the final motion because it's not. They're not added in the uh, language right now of the motion itself. So just. I mean, we can say as added conditions is noted during the course of the meeting, added conditions, seven, eight, nine, something like that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, uh, Sam Taylor. Um, at this point, uh, I, I'd like to give the app, the applicant. Uh, an adequate time to review. We're throwing a couple of new things at him. Uh, and Brian, I obviously want to recognize you uh, for, for possible modifications or suggestions as well. Uh, can I, can I ask uh, Keith, do you want to take a short time period and uh, review these and uh, consult with uh. With your colleagues?
Yes, I, I would like to do that, Mr. Chairman. I, since we were unable to get the uh, owner. Uh, being on this call, I'd like to go speak with him first. If you're asking if we can concur with it or not, I need to talk to him.
Yes, that's what I wanted to give you a fair opportunity. Brian, did you want to make a comment or a suggestion? Uh, before we go and take a recess, just so Keith has all the information available?
Yeah, so if we can go back to number eight real quick, Sam. So twenty-five hundred minus, what is twenty-two eighteen, guys? I mean, that's two hundred and eighty-two units. How many are in Ashland Park?
Hundred ninety.
I think we're double counting multi-use again. I, I, I can't come up with the same numbers. So twenty-five hundred minus the Ashland Park leaves us what, twenty-three eighteen, right? And then we subtract. And then we subtract the 100 mixed-use commercial. That's how you get to the 2218. Therefore, the 2218 shouldn't have 100 mixed-use commercial again subtracted. Again, I'm losing 100. There's 100 units missing somewhere.
There's about 94. And that's because we did not use all the density that were that was allowed. So Brian, we, there was 2,500 units permitted. We only actually. If you count Ashland Park as all 190 units, which is another argument to say that we shouldn't even done that. We still only come up to, I believe it's 2408.
Right.
So we didn't use all the density.
Okay, so there's the missing units.
Yeah.
That's the missing units. It's the fact that you guys are only totaling 2408, not 2,500. That's, I guess that's where I missed those units because no one said that before, I guess. That 100 units are almost left out. So you guys have actually decreased the density. So.
Correct.
Thumbs up.
Okay, if nobody has anything else to add at this point, let's take approximately a 20-minute recess to give you enough time, Keith, to. Where you want to go over. And then I would also ask the members of the planning commission again. If they have questions or comments that they want to make on the recommended conditions, either the existing set six. Or the proposed three new conditions. And then we'll come back. We'll hear from the applicant. And then we'll review anything else before we go into the final final deliberation. So let's take a 20-minute recess until 3:30 approximately. We'll come back at 3:30 and reconvene. Thank you. We have 3:31. We may have to get a couple of people to connect in because I see Rob Anderson. Might be connecting and we'll try and make accommodations if we can make sure everybody's on. But it's now 3:31 and I will call the meeting of the planning commission back to order. We may not have everybody on yet, but I'd like to call the role again for purposes of determining a quorum. So if you could answer your name when I call your name. Thank you, Kristy.
Present.
Dave? Dave, are you back on the line? Can you hear us? I hope Dave's not having a connection problem. Dave, if you can try and unmute yourself or maybe if you. If he's not available, Colleen, maybe if you could give him a quick call, maybe I'm not sure which phone line he might be on to make sure he can participate. Okay, Mark?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Thank you. Your connection's still a little fuzzy when on your audio. Maureen?
Present.
Okay, and that makes five of us and we'll hope that David Cola can join back with us. Keith, I'm not sure if you're back on the on the Zoom meeting.
I am.
Okay, and then I see Rob Anderson that says connecting to audio. So I'm not sure if you need him or want him back or David Clark.
I think I've got enough direction from from.
Okay. All right, let me just recap where we're at for everybody's benefit and then hopefully David Cola can come back and join us because I don't want to have too much of this discussion. Without him, Sam Taylor, correct me if I'm wrong, but if if Dave is not. Able to participate in part of the discussion deliberations. We do have an issue with him voting on matters where he did not participate. Is that, am I correct on that?
Sam Taylor, Douglas County DAs for the record. Mr. Chair, the rules basically say if somebody's not present. So if he's, we don't quite frankly know whether or not he's present or not, or he's just having technical difficulties. The concept is if somebody's listening to the discussion and can participate in the discussion. And has read the materials and has heard also the public comment, then they're eligible to vote. If they are. You know, not able to hear or. You know, not able to hear or participate, then they're not able to vote. So it's a question of whether or not he's absent or not.
Okay, uh, Colleen, if you could try and get in touch with him either by phone or by email or.
I did. He's, he said he'll be back on in a second.
Okay, great. Okay, then I think I can just maybe recamp, recap of where we're at right now and then uh, we'll ask Dave to confirm his presence so that he doesn't miss out on any, any of the important discussion that we have. But basically, we've had a good discussion on the uh, Buckeye Farm specific plan, which is agenda item two. Uh, I think the presentations were very good. I think all members had a good opportunity to ask questions and clarify issues. Uh, we're now to the point where we were discussing the recommended conditions. The staff in the packet on page one sixty six has all the recommended conditions. And then there were, based on the discussion that we have, there were three additional uh, recommended conditions dealing with the uh, conservation easement and groundwater rights and specifying on TDRs and discussing housing types. So that's where we're at right now. And Dave, I did see you uh, light up there. Are you able to hear what we're talking about now?
Yes, I am.
Great. We didn't want to miss you and leave you out of the equation. So Keith, we'll turn it back over to you. Sam Taylor. You're muted, I think, Sam.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Sam Taylor, Douglas County DAs. I just wanted to note uh, for the record that during the recess, um, there was a discussion between Sam Booth and myself over language um, relative to the um, uh, conditions that went out over YouTube. Um, but it wasn't anything that we were discussing that wasn't already discussed, which is relative to what water rights and the preservation of the water rights on the um, the farm properties. And so that, that's been addressed and that will be shown. You know, what we discussed in the proposed changes that Sam's going to present here in just a bit.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Keith, did you want to go ahead and give some reaction to, to where we were at with the three new recommended conditions? And then we'll bring it back to the planning commission for questions or discussions as well.
Yeah, yes, I, I don't mind doing that. So there were three conditions that were discussed, additional conditions, I should say. Um, so one says, I understand it prior to recordation of the first subdivision map within the Buckeye Farm specific plan, the applicant will. Record conservation easement over the village center farm and all natural habitat in native pasture areas as shown on page eighteen of the specific plan. Transfer of all of the permanent surface and groundwater irrigation rights from these parcels is restricted. I requested additional language that would say from after that, that would say subject to county approval of an application to certify transferable development rights lands. So those lands are zone A nineteen, most of which are um, are currently. Have the ability to request certification of development rights. So we're asking that we have the ability to do that, which would give the owner the um, the ability to at least realize some value from those lands in terms of the water rights that are now going to be tied to those properties. So. We'll go through that certification process. It is available to us. There's no requirement to change any codes or anything like that. Um, but we will go through that process, which through approval of that would then require us to put down the open space conservation easement and tie the water rights to the land. The next condition, um, which is regarding the proof, this was the math conditional college approval of the uh, specific plan. That would be number two if Sam is pulling along. Uh, this one's acceptable uh, to us just as it reads. So there is no problem with that. Uh, condition three is acceptable to us as well. Or nine.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Sam, do you want to go back to number seven and throw that language up and maybe we can deal with these uh, that one for discussion amongst members of the, the planning commission? Uh, anybody on the planning commission have comments, questions, suggestions of uh, either the staff or the applicant on uh, on the existing language or the new red line language? Okay. I think then uh, we're at the point where we could either discuss any of the uh, particulars of the, the specific plan. Or any of the findings. And again, the findings that are required to be made for approval of the specific plan are on page, page one sixty one. Uh, they have, there are five of them, A, B, C, D, and E. And Sam has outlined information on those originally. Uh, so I'd be happy to entertain a motion or we can have further discussion of those before we do the motion. What's the pleasure of, of the planning commission? Is there someone who would like to make a motion? Or do we have further questions that we need to resolve? Brian?
So if my microphone is good enough, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I moved to approve PC resolution twenty twenty dash oh four recommending approval to the Board of County Commissioners of the Buckeye Farm specific plan DP twenty dash oh two eighteen. With conditions stated in the staff report and added conditions number seven, eight, and nine, based on the staff report and presentation, public comment, and ability to make the required findings.
Thank you. Brian has made the motion to approve the uh, uh, plan. Is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
Mark seconds the motion. Is there further discussion? Maureen.
I am, I'm not going to be supporting this because I'm stuck on the language that says this is conceptual. It's a conceptual plan. And. The discussion we had that said, no, the development areas, that's what they're going to be. And that's how it's going to be. And that's not conceptual to me. But I do want to express the, the overall design and concept is. Very acceptable, but it's a. I just have trouble with that language. So I'm, I'm going to be voting against it based on the finding B can't be met because we're asking to approve something that basically is cast in stone and it's conceptual. At least that's what it says. Is that clear for the record?
Thank you, Maureen. That was good explanation. Um, other members of the planning commission which to state or make comments at this point before we proceed to a vote. You can also amplify your vote when you, when you make your vote, uh, if that's easier for people to do. Sam Taylor?
Was, was the motion seconded or I missed that?
Yes, uh, Brian made the motion and Mark seconded the motion.
Yeah, for some reason I couldn't hear. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, if there's no other discussion, then I will call the roll. And again, this is on the item two approval of the Buckeye Farm specific plan with the additional uh, conditions as was outlined. So Kristy.
Hi.
Dave?
Hey.
Dave, do you have specific reasons or conditions that you want to cite?
I've already cited my reasons that there isn't a water support to this, this development.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, Mark.
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Maureen?
Nay.
And the chair votes aye. So on this, there are four votes aye and two votes nay. So the uh, uh, motion is agreed to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate your, your good participation. Uh. If there's nothing else that we need to move forward on, um, I will move to a closing public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the planning commission. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person who has left a voice message on Douglas County's public comment phone line, seven seven five, seven eight three, six zero eight eight. The voice messages will be played to the public and planning commission in the order they were recorded. No more than one voice message, public comment per person will be played to the planning commission in public. Uh, Colleen, do you have any public comment at this point?
Yes, so far I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Jim Slade. When member Oland arrived, Chairman Walder, you joked about all he had missed was the approval of the agenda. Of course, you completely ignored public comment, which is required, oral public comment. Uh, the public's only opportunity to comment on an important issue like Buckeye Ranch before your decision. So that's contrary to the letter intended of the open plan meeting. Yet of course, you give unlimited time for the pro development presentation by both staff and applicant. Sam uh, mentioned that the plan was consistent with many multiple goals and policies in the land use and ag elements. And myself and others showed how it was inconsistent with an equal number of land and ag use elements. There was no discussion of that, no retort by Sam or by any member of the planning commission to discuss those at all. Um. Sam's ideas that you preserve ag land by developing it, that's a novel concept. You know, whoever that dark bearded guy was, he never stated his name or his affiliation publicly. That's on you, Chairman Walder. You should have made that happen. That's unacceptable. I have no idea who that guy is. And just saying that land that's good for cattle or alfalfa is not particularly helpful and doesn't answer the questions about cold winters and hot summers and short growing seasons. Mr. Rubin, of course, reminded us that we'll work out the details later on, you know, pretty much everything on the farmland, on the water rights, on the zoning, on the parking, the water, the transport, the drainage, the sewer. You know, that's um, not really very comforting to anyone. And it shouldn't be comforting to you and you should make them come with more detail when you approve this. Um, Mr. Walder, you said that there was no risk to the county. But there is a risk. There's a lot of risk. There's the cost of Mueller Parkway, whether it's two or four lane, that we will be responsible for whether or not this whole project craters. Uh, there's the cost of a new school. It's going to be certainly inevitable. There's the traffic congestion is going to affect our quality of life. There's the viability of our water supply. There's increased taxes. Um, and or declining services. I mean, all of that is a cost to the residents of Douglas County. And some of it's a cost out of pocket to the county itself and, and, and out of the residents pockets when it comes to increased taxes. So this thing has a lot of risk to it, a lot of risk to the county and to its residents that are unacceptable. It's really a sad day for Douglas County when you just apply, approve this with so little information.
That's the only one so far.
Thank you, Maureen. Uh, I believe we started public comment around three forty four, so we'll continue to allow some additional time for public comment. I do want to respond. I, I apologize. I thought that I had introduced each of the members of the uh, applicant's team for item two, Darren Joffe. Uh, also known as Farmer D, I thought I had introduced him uh, when I recognized uh, Keith Rubin. But if I did not do that, I apologize. And uh, his name will be in the record. Uh, Brian, did you have a public comment that you wanted to make?
I just wanted to note, you know, I was here in time to hear Mr. Slade's comments, but I did hear his comments regarding infrastructure, schools and that. I may have missed the beginning portion, if anything, um, and anybody prior to Mr. Slade, that would be accurate.
Thank you very much, Brian. According to my records, we only had three opening public comments, Ellie Waller, Jim Slade, and Jack Jacobs. And unfortunately, that's kind of the nature of the situation when we have technical difficulties that we sometimes miss a certain portions, but I'm sure you reviewed all the public comments that were submitted to, uh, for the record before the meeting. And I'm sure you'll go back and review uh, anything that you may have missed uh, while you were unable to participate. But we do try and err on the side of caution as far as we can. And that's why I paused the meeting specifically at the end to make sure David Cola could be, be present for all of the discussion uh, on the, on the agenda item. Anything else, Colleen, that's come in uh, in the interim?
No, nothing right now.
Okay, I do want to remind everybody that uh, public comment can, can you continue to be made. Uh, and any that's received, uh, the day of the meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental materials to the county's website and distributed to the planning commissioners within twenty-four hours after the meeting. Again, the planning at douglas nv dot U S is the appropriate uh, email for submitting public comment. Um, thank you very much, uh, members of the planning commission. Uh, thank you, staff. Uh, you've all done a wonderful job, but this is a, our last regularly scheduled meeting of the year. I don't anticipate that we'll have any other meetings uh, in December. Uh, so again, thank you all very much for your good work, your participation. Uh, we've had some very good discussions. I think we've uh, done an excellent job on uh, representing our community. So I do appreciate everybody's good participation. Uh, Colleen, anything else that has come in?
No, still nothing.
Okay, I have three fifty now and we have left the public comment open for five minutes. So unless any other members of the planning commission or staff needs to add anything to the record, then I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.